I'd like to call the meeting of the Matthews Town Board of Commissioners to order for April 22nd, 2019. We'll do a safety minute first. If we need to leave the building, we go out the back door. You go to the right over to the far side of the lobby, there's a stairs that takes you downstairs and out the front door. If you go out and go to the left of the back hallway, there's a stairwell that'll take you out the back door into the parking lot. So, in both cases, we move away from the building and watch for emergency vehicles. To the right side of the dais there, out in the lobby, the reception desk, there is a defibrillator. It is, appears to be working as of an hour ago. So, if we need that, it's apparently self-instructions. We haven't needed it yet, so I'm not sure exactly what it will tell you, but it does give you the instructions. If we need to call 911, obviously from your cellphone, it would be 911. If you were to go to the reception desk, there's no number that needs to be dialed to get out of the building. You'd simply dial 911, just as with a regular phone. And I think that's it. So, this evening, I am going to, and Larry Whitley, I'm going to apologize. I've been trying. I was going to ask you if you would do the invocation for us tonight. And five times today, I tried to give you a call and just never got to it. But could I impose upon you and put you on the spot and ask you to give our invocation?
The Bible tells us to be also ready.
That's right.
I'm honored to be here tonight.
Thank you.
Join with me in prayer. Our Father, we thank you for yet another day of our very life, our health, and for strength. We thank you for the business of the town of Matthews, and we ask that you now give them knowledge, wisdom, and power that they might enact those things that are called in your name. We thank you now for this council, this mayor, this board, and everyone that come in contact, that they might make good, fair judgments for all. We offer this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's always nice to have a subject matter expert available to take care of. Thank you, Larry. Mr. Manager, do we have any items to add to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to correct on the consent agenda item. E. 2 and 3, those budget amendments should go to the CIP fund and then to, in the CIP fund, to the Highway 51, Ottawa Road, running about. That's for the sign, $50,000 for the sign, our portion of the sign.
Okay, and those are on the agenda?
Yes, they're on, yes.
Okay, on the highlighted portion. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Right, the next item is public comment. And we have two people who have signed up. Please state your name to the town clerk and your address, and limit your remarks to four minutes. The first individual is Reverend Larry Whitley.
Larry W. Whitley, 1401 Reed Hockey Road, Matthews, North Carolina. Good evening, Mayor and Town Commissioners. I'm here with two items. The first item I'm here is to remind this board that this is our 16th at Mount Moriah Missionary Baptist Church, celebrating law enforcement appreciation and public servant appreciation, which you do so often, to this whole year and the time that you serve. This year, we are honoring military personnel as well on that Sunday. What I did when I retired from the patrol is I understood that people that do public service, very seldom to get recognized a day of appreciation and say, "Thank you." This is our way as Mount Moriah, it's my chairman, if you will, Stan Fred, and the whole church of Mount Moriah would invite all of you. I think you received the letter. This is a way of just reminding you, if you can, and I know some of you are busy, but it's if you can, bring your family, and that extends to all of you as well, too. But if you're hungry and want some good old-fashioned cooking, Chris Milton, this is for you. But we invite you to please come and enjoy a message, and then I promise, I'm preaching, so I won't be long because I know you'll be hungry, and then enjoy. It's a time when all of my church get together and they cook their special dish of just public service, and we want you to have a good time, just fellowship, as our way in saying thank you to you. Number two, I'm here in support of the naming of the new park on Rice Road, to be named Boyd's Park. I was honored 22 years ago to meet Ms. Viola Boyd, who we had great conversation right across the street from the church when I first became pastor, and we understood that her, I did not meet Mr. Sam, but I know Harvey ever since then as well, too. But I think it do a great honor to name that park after them for the work that they've done, not only in the Crestdale community, but just for the whole town of Matthews. I know Mr. Boyd was sometime named as Crestdale Mayor, and I think Harvey's took that up since he's passed on. But it gives a good, good legacy of showing people of diversity of color, that we contributed to this community and to this town as well, too. So, I'm here to render my support and honor of Sam and Viola Boyd in the name of the new park on Rice Road. I think Rice Road won, but the road is already named Rice. The other is Sam and Burke, and we already got a Burke Road name, I think, along with the statue here. So, I think this is very good and very honorable, not only for the community of Crestdale and Sam and Viola, who are very dear friends of mine, and Harvey's is just as well, too. So, thank y'all for your consideration, and thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Next is Mr. Harold Hood.
Harold Hood, 2339 Rice Road. Good evening again, council, mayor. I was hoping I wouldn't have to be up here again after our last seven or eight meetings, but nonetheless, it's good to see you again, anyway. Mr. Whitley, thank you for your comments there. I want to share with you, I've lived on Rice Road since 1981 beside the Rice's, and as I have told the council before, they were some of the finest people you'd ever want to meet. Settled in the 1600s, their ancestors did. As I also mentioned, they helped to make cannonballs for the Civil War in that part of the county there. And needless to say, they are fine people, just like the Boyd's were. What I would like to say is, you know, government has a tendency to try and confuse people nowadays. So, people always tell me about Charlotte, why don't we have two or three Queens Roads, this, that, or whatever. But you know, if somebody asks me where Ottawa Road Park is, I don't have to tell them it's on, you know, Independence Boulevard, or it's on the Plaza, it's on Ottawa Road. And if we have a Rice Road Park on Rice Road, it makes more sense and will reflect such on you folks as for common sense and cutting down on confusion. I was at that park today. By the way, if we don't get the grass cut there soon, you're gonna have to put some sheep or cows there because it's about 18 inches high. And if you force me to go up there and mow, that'll be fine, but it's not gonna look pretty when I finish because it's long, I'm telling you guys. But nonetheless, in regards to the Boyd's, my question is, and two of the people up there today asked me about this because we were talking about the park not having official name, and they said, "Well, why don't they build a park over in Crestdale and name it after the Boyd's there in Crestdale? If the folks are that helpful, give them the honor they deserve right there in the Crestdale community." There's no doubt, that's where it should be for proper placement. And then the Rice Road Park would have the proper placement there on Rice Road. It's just, it's just confusing to tell somebody to go to Boyd Park, "Oh, where's Boyd Parks on Rice Road?" Well, I thought that's where the Rice Road Park was. Well, that's what everybody's already calling it, is coming to play there and bring their kids. And so, my question is, if we're willing to use common sense, why don't we name Matthews Township Parkway Matthews Township Parkway? Why don't we name it the Hill Express or the Pineville Pathway? Because we don't want to confuse people. But the Boyd's certainly deserve a park named in their, in their name. But let's put it in the Crestdale community where they're so well-known, and whatever plaque goes with it. It just makes more sense for the government to look at it in a common sense way, rather than confusing people otherwise. And so, again, nothing against the Boyd's or Ms. Burke, she's already got the lane named, as Mr. Whitley said. But the Rice's have been there since the 1600s, their ancestors, and it seems just as appropriate to put their name on there, more so than someone else who has not lived there. So, that's our concern and our thoughts from probably only about a half dozen people that I've met up at the park. But they're already knowing it as Rice Road Park, not Rice Park, because the Rice's no longer live there. But Rice Road Park makes sense for geography, and also for the fact that people already know it as Rice Road Park. I thank you for your time, and I'm gonna have to dismiss myself early, but please take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, items 7A through 7E4. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. All those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next item, 8A, is receive an update on the planning conference to-do list.
Could we turn off? The lights are kind of bright.
Oh, okay.
All right, so this is the monthly update on the planning conference to-do list. So, item number 20 deals with conduct board training for emergency operations. The board is scheduled to hear an update from the county's emergency operations plan, the second meeting in June. Our, the town of Matthews plan will dovetail with that. Chief Kennerberg is already working on that. And then, once those, those two things have been done, then we want, then we will train the board on this new plan. It should be early in fiscal year, you know, probably July or August, or probably August, maybe September of this year. The second thing is conduct incident training annually, kind of refer to the above comments. We will do some type of tabletop exercise early in 2020 as well. In talking to the chief, what we envision is something dealing with the railroad. That typically is, I think, the one that gives us the most pause as the railroad comes through town, and we felt the train here not too long ago in this meeting. The murals on the 8th, you guys will hear, will see a proposed mural for, on the Dance Studio Building on North Trade Street. It's a very exciting mural. I think everybody's gonna be very proud of it, but we wanted you guys to see it for final review. Handrails, relocate the handrails on, out front. So, we sent out an email to everybody on the board on April 17th. Tentative schedule for the columns, I have not talked to CJ O'Neill today, I don't know if it's still on, but as soon as those columns get replaced, then the handrails will be installed properly, by the way. The handrails are not, as Commissioner Urban, who is an architect, talks about those. Handrails go into the columns themselves. That's not the way it should work. The last one is Crestdale Road, analyze Crestdale Road. This has been going, been an ongoing, whatever, work, I guess. We do have $125,000 grant from the Senate through Senator Bishop, and then we're waiting on the other 125 that was supposed to come from the House of Representatives side. That, that 125 needs to go through the Board of Transportation, but it is on the May agenda. So, once that gets approved, we would have $250,000, and we'd sit down with Reverend Whitley and others from the Crestdale community and our staff and talk about what is really, I would say, the highest and best use for the $250,000. So, that's the update. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Are there any questions for the manager? Okay, seen none. We'll move on to new business. Item 9A is receive information on new public art sculpture. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. King is now presenting that to the board.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Board. Staff came in contact with the local artist, Mr. Peter Rubino, through his involvement in the Waxaw Art Council. He participated in the January display in the McDowell Art Center. The initial idea was for staff to ask him to share his talents with the Veterans Art Class in the McDowell Center, but the conversation quickly changed to honestly commissioning a piece of art. The one we see here is titled Remembrance. The sculpture features four faces representing the five branches of the military. The Navy and Coast Guard are represented by one individual. Facial features represent the different genders and racial makeups of the, of our military. And the sculpture will be made of, or could be made of a resin material suited for the outdoors. There is a version that currently exists of the sculpture, sculpture in the town of Waxaw. So, the idea of installing this type of public art was talked about in our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, also shared with the Veterans Advisory Committee, been vetted through both of those groups. We do have a proposed location, Stumptown Park in the Veteran Memorial Area. Statue would be installed with a podium and a concrete, resting on a concrete pad. Also with a plaque attached with information about the art, the artist, and also a special thank you to the brave men and women that served in the military. This, an investment for this type of public art by the town, roughly $3,700. At this point, there is an unveiling plan, along with the Veterans Advisory Committee, for Memorial Day on May 27th. So, I, a little bit of background about the piece, staff is very excited. I'll say the Veterans Advisory Committee is also excited about this new installation of public art around Matthews.
Okay, any questions for Cory?
John?
Yeah, Cory, the only thing that concerns me, I think it's a wonderful piece of art, but I'm a little bit concerned that it's identical to one in Waxaw. Was there any thought to having a unique piece for Matthews instead of copying a neighbor's, neighboring city?
We did talk through it, given what the piece is. It was one that we say honestly fell in love with. I mean, we would not be first to install it, but it is a very attractive piece that we felt fits in Stumptown Park.
And you said the material is some type of a...
Resin.
Resin?
Type of resin.
All right. Any other questions? So, will this come back to us with a cost figure, or is this being...
The $3,700 is the investment by the town.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is funding match for multi-use path on Highway 51. Turn to, well, Susan's gonna do this instead of Dana. Okay.
Sorry to disappoint you.
No. You're not disappointing me, you're confusing me.
Mayor and Commissioners, I, as always, I am pleased to be presenting a transportation item to you tonight. And yes, it is on behalf of Dana. Just want to remind you, this, this project isn't, isn't new to you. We talked about this at the planning conference, so these figures should be familiar to you. What we're asking tonight is just your help with a paperwork issue that the NPO needs from us, which is basically a letter of endorsement from you, saying that, yep, we like this project. Yep, we're gonna commit to $215,000 in federal fiscal year 2025, and have Hazen sign this, this letter to be sent to the NCDOT. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions? Mr. Query?
I got a question about something else, but not on this, but I'd like to ask her since she's here.
Okay, well, let's, let's go through this, get this done. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Susan, the way I understand it, NCDOT will pay up to 80% of the cost of the entire project, correct?
Yes.
So, ours is just a portion?
That's correct.
And that, that portion approximately is 200 and...
15,000, 215,000.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Higgin?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the match for the Matthews Township Parkway Multi-Use Path, EB 5969, in fiscal year 2025 for 215,000, and allow the town manager to sign the letter of support for the project.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Beltman?
Susan, thank you, Mayor. Susan, does, is there any, I realize this is an endorsement letter from the town manager, but does our portion or does, does the state's portion include an inflation adjustment? For four years, five years, times 4% typical inflation could be a little bit of money. Will we build in anything?
Somehow, I expected you to ask this question, and I don't have a fabulous answer, except that, not really, because we don't know, construction costs could come down. But the DOT is becoming much better at estimating and revisiting estimates periodically. And so, especially with Dana being so involved in the Transportation Coordinating Committee, she will keep an eye on this, and if we start seeing construction costs, you know, really escalate like that, yeah, we can definitely request that this number be looked at. So, you're right, right now, it's 215,000. Will we come back in five years and say, "Oh, by the way, we might need to increase this"? We might have to.
These are NCDOT's estimates, right?
That's correct.
And they're estimates of 2025.
That's correct.
So, they should, maybe "should" is a dangerous word here, but it seems to me that they are smart enough to understand today's dollars, they gotta estimate this in 2025 dollars, otherwise they're being derailed, or they're just gonna rob their own budget.
Yeah, and I haven't seen the calculations to verify that statement.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Query, would you like to add an item to the agenda?
No, I, Mayor, I think what I'd like to do is I'll give her a call, give them a call, and talk to them, it's got to do with John Street, so it's probably better to have a map available.
Okay, yeah, I'll be here to the end of the meeting to be available for any other questions.
Okay, the next item, 9C, is the monthly budget report. And I'll turn to Assistant Town Manager Becky Hawk.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing major to note for the group. We are tracking almost exactly where we'd like to be for revenues. We're just down a point or two off from where we would expect to be at nine months of the year, and we are coming in well below budget on a lot of our expenses at this point. So, nothing of note, happy to answer any questions. I will note that it did not show up in this month's report, but we did receive the request from Plantation Estates for the $140,000 reimbursement for an overage calculation that the county had calculated for their property taxes. So, we will be processing that. So, that will affect our overall revenues slightly at the end of the year, but it's not gonna show up in this kind of report.
So, that is just the Matthews portion of the overage charge?
That was just the Matthews portion of the overage.
That's fairly significant. Any questions for Ms. Hawk? Okay, thank you. Next item is review of the board deferral policy, and I'll turn to the town attorney, Mr. Buckley.
Well, Mayor, you asked that I take a look at it, but I'm not sure what the question is or what the board is seeking for me to say here, not that you're seeking for me to say what you want me to say, but basically, I'll just say, basically what it says is that, that you will, if, if requested, you will defer a matter if there is a reason to do that. Usually, a reason to do that does not include an absence. It would require some kind of compelling reason accompanying an absence in order for the absence to be a reason to grant the request to defer. But the board generally will give a deferral if requested, but that's generally. You really, the board as a legislative body always has the right to vote it up or down either way. It's not an automatic deferral. The board needs to vote on it, and you obviously, as a legislative body, have the right to vote whichever way you want it to go. But the deferral is not automatic. That's basically what, what this says, is that, you know, you will tend to, it's your policy to, if someone requests it, to defer it, but it still would go to a vote. And the board as, as a legislative body, it can either go with the policy or not go with the policy and vote not to defer.
So, in a situation where an individual board member has been involved in a lot of discussions on a particular item, and then they're unable to attend the meeting, and they would like for that discussion to occur at the next meeting so that they can participate, that would come to the board as a request prior to the discussion of that item, and there would be a vote as to whether to defer that or not. Is that correct?
That should be the way it is, but also remember, a compelling reason can be what the board knows is someone's particular passion on, on an issue. But then, what is a compelling reason is for each individual member of the board to make that determination on whether it's a compelling reason or not.
So, they can vote, or they are obligated to vote as they feel appropriate as an elected representative of the people?
Yes, but it won't come up sometimes until the actual night of the meeting, and the, the person who's gonna be absent requests a deferral. It would be, that person wouldn't be there, but it would be up to the board to either grant or not grant that deferral. But it's not automatic, you would have to vote on it.
Okay. Are there any questions for the attorney? Mr. Query?
Yes, and I'm gonna disagree somewhat on that, and I think part of the gentleman's agreement that we agreed on when we took office.
Get my mic down. Something that we agreed on when we took office. And if you read, it says, "Any commissioner or mayor with just cause may request an item on the printed agenda to be deferred. It shall be the policy of the board commissioners to defer said requested agenda item until the next regular meeting." It doesn't say a vote, it just says, "Will do that." And it says, "It's not a compelling reason that a commissioner is not gonna be present." So, I'm kind of reading it a little bit different, Charlie, than, than what you're reading, because I'm reading it as a direct statement. And basically, as a gentleman's agreement, we all had and assigned on to this at the first of our terms.
I understand that, but at the same time, a legislative body always has the right to bring that to a vote.
So, this shouldn't be even been in there, then?
Well, that just gives the policy, and you, you can either go along with the policy or not go along with the policy.
Okay, I respectfully disagree on that, but I understand.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, quiet, quiet crowd tonight. Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Okay, next item, 9E, is consider names for park on Rice Road. And Cory, I'll turn to you for that.
Thank you. Well, first, I'll say that I am very excited that we are attempting to create a name for a park that, aside from maybe two or three small tasks, is completely done. So, we have a new park amenity in Matthews that the citizens can enjoy. But since the beginning stages of the park project, the common, the common name referred to it has been Rice Road Park. Staff and the advisory committee, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, saw an opportunity to possibly create a more unique name for the park site. Staff researched ideas and working with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee came up with three suggestions to share with the town board to take under consideration. One name being Boyd Park, in recognition of Sam and Viola Boyd and their contributions to Matthews and the Crestdale community. They were both community advocates. Sam and Viola played a critical role in connecting neighbors in Crestdale with the resources in Mecklenburg County, albeit bill, help paying bills or resources to receive any medications. They used their personal dollars to fund creation of a water service in the Crestdale community. At that time, Crestdale was not incorporated part of Matthews. At that time, Crestdale was not incorporated part of Matthews. And Sam Boyd, as Reverend Whitley alluded to, has been regarded to as the mayor of Crestdale, represented Crestdale on the Matthews School Board in the nineteen sixties, assisted with the transition and integration of students from Crestdale School to the Matthews School and East Mecklenburg Schools. A second option from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee is Selma Burke Park, named in recognition of Dr. Selma Burke and her accomplishments. Renowned artist, most notable accomplishment is creation of the bronze plaque that's replicated on the back of the US dime, created the bronze statue entitled Family, currently resting in the lobby of Matthews Town Hall. Certainly resided in Matthews, there is a connection, visiting friends and relatives in Matthews, and we have a Selma Burke Lane in Matthews, again honoring her accomplishments. A, another option is Rice Park in recognition of the Rice family. Originally from Germany, this family settled in the area, currently surrounding the park site. Family members of the Morning Star Lutheran Church, contributing in many ways to the church. The geographical connection to this site is most notable, the family owned majority of that acreage and many of the surrounding acreage dating back to the early seventeen hundreds. Rice Road, again, is named for the Rice family. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee did suggest not including the actual named road in the park, just to, I guess, be consistent with naming the, I guess, recognizing what we could name the park, just simply Rice Park. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee does view Boyd Park as their, call it top choice. Again, looking at the contributions of the Boyd family, they were in fact targeted toward the Crestdale Community, but the Advisory Committee did see naming the park Boyd Park as a recognition of the townwide effects of their contributions. And I guess for tonight, the, the ask of the board is to, I guess, take these three names under consideration and hopefully move forward with making some signs for the park.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Cory, was there any research done or anything else found out about the Rice family and the making of cannonballs for the Revolutionary War?
I spoke, and when I say staff did research, it was Cory doing research.
Okay.
Google?
Some, some Google, but some personal conversations. I think Mr. Hood did leave. Had some conversations with him, another gentleman, a couple of family members, and I'll say Mr. Hood was the only one that could, I couldn't substantiate the cannonball...
Okay.
...story.
Thank you.
He was the one that shared it, but I could not find anybody else.
Alright.
Any other questions? Mr. Query?
Yes, and I talked to Harvey earlier than the meeting. I, I have a concern with naming the park anything other than Rice Road. Number one, for the family who had that land out there, and number, but the main thing is being just the common sense that if you say, where are we going to the park, meet me at Rice Road Park, people would know it's the Rice Road. I do, I do have a lot of wonderful feelings about Sam and Viola. Sam and I, he was kind of the mayor of Crestdale when I was mayor of Matthews, and he and I worked together to get water down to the community, and he, he always was there when we needed something, and I do want something, and I want something nice named in, in his name. But I don't think that the Rice Road place is closest, is close enough to the area where I would like for people to walk by and say, "This is the Boyd Park," and, and put together that with Sam and Harvey and Viola, that these are people who lived in that community, and these are people who pushed and, and got the right things for Crestdale, because they were the right people. I will tell you on the water line, he tried to get the people down there to, folks down there to help with the water line. They would not do it, but they needed water. And he came to me and he said, "Mr. Mayor, I want you to put that water line down there, and I'm gonna personally pay for it." And the only thing I ask you is, he said, "I know folks down here that can afford to, and they're not doing what they should." And he said, "I don't want another penny back, but when the time comes and they wanna connect on, you charge them the fees, and don't let anybody ride on that," he said, "because I had, I had that under control when I came to you, and I don't want it to die, and it's something we need in this community for us to continue living down there. The water's bad." So I have a lot of real strong feelings about him. The main thing I have is I'd like to see something closer, closer in, named for, for them, and I just think it makes sense to keep it named Rice Road Park. Thank you.
Mr. Mint?
Cory, thank you for presenting this to us, and I'm, I, I would prefer that the park just be Rice Park, let's eliminate the road from it, in honor of the Rice family and not the road, but just Rice Park. And for the Boyd's, I much like Commissioner Query. I want something that is more significant and something that's more important and something that reflects more of what the Boyd's have done for Crestdale and for Matthews than a park that is separated from you and will not represent all that's been done. I, I would like for us to go to the drawing board and see what we could do to memorialize and to honor the Boyd family in a way that's indicative of their heart, their hard work, their efforts and their contributions to Matthews as a town and the people of its town. And I don't think a park that is that many miles away from the heart of what you did would be the right thing to do, and I, I just want us to do something that is more special for them than a park that is so detached from them and from what they did. Whether it's the name of a building, a monument, a memorial, a, you know, do we rename, and I'm just throwing out question, ideas here, do we rename Crestdale the Boyd Crestdale Community and put some great signs? I don't know if you've seen the historic signs in Charlotte that really proudly and beautifully are different in some of the old communities, like Plaza Midwood, like Oakhurst, and, and those kinds of communities may, you know, I want us to do something that is much more special for the Boyd's.
Mr. Higdon?
Yes, I'm really struggling with this decision because I think we have three really good recommendations. Everybody knows the story of Sam and Viola Boyd. I, those of you that haven't, I urge you to read about Dr. Selma Burke. I certainly did this weekend, and wow, what a phenomenal lady and artist. Couple of comments I want to make. The first one is, I, I don't think the argument of naming, you know, a park for the road it's on is necessary to be able to find it. People seem to find my house, even though I don't live on John Higden Lane, so I don't think you have to necessarily name the park for the road that it's on. I've heard the comments of Commissioner Dement and Commissioner Query, and I, I really, actually, I'm really struggling with this because I would like to honor the Boyd's, not only Sam and Viola, but their son, Harvey, who's done a lot for the community. And it's, and it's just really, really tough. I know that we'd like to maybe have another park named after the Boyd's, but I'm thinking, when will that opportunity avail itself? There's not like, there's a lot of parkland in Crestdale that we're gonna suddenly acquire to, to make a new park with. So it is, it is a struggle. Something that we might want to consider, that someday, God willing, we will have another school built here, and I've often thought that naming a new elementary school, the Boyd Elementary School, might be a nice tribute. But I, I still honestly haven't made my mind up, and I'm gonna vote on this. I'm, I'm going between Boyd and Rice. I agree with Commissioner Dement, I don't think we need the road part in there, I think just Rice Park, if we go that route, would be appropriate.
Any other comments? Do we have a mo, Mr. Milton?
Yeah, I think, I, I don't want to repeat what's already been said, but I, I concur.